I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, in this law of liberty and justice.
That was nice, unredacted pledge.
All right.
What is going on?
Yeah, with our, with our phone bookies that I called it.
We're interested in any of the paper companies.
Sorry. Uh, announcements, checks over twenty-five thousand. Yeah, much. Um, first one was for Abbott House, which was a water sewer bill refund due to estimated bills versus actual for ninety thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and two cents. Next is a performance bond refund, uh, for thirty thousand dollars to Eric and Jennifer Segal. The next one is paid to Allied World, is the final bill and refund of retainage, um, forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Whoa, Allied World was the, this building?
That's the, yeah, the bond, the bond company that took over this building.
Um, the next one is Louis Scott Varetti, which is Town Hall Theater Plaza, which is, uh, the, uh, car, Marshall came in for that. Another one for Louis Scopelletti.
Scopelletti.
Um, which is also the Town Hall Theater, sixty-four thousand eight hundred forty, Town Hall Theater Plaza, really.
Yes.
Uh, sixty-four thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars. Next one's PCI Industries, um, which is for the, the paving, which is twenty-six thousand four hundred fifty dollars and nineteen cents. Those are all the pay.
So Larry, the, the performance bond refund for Eric and Jennifer Segal, was that for a job that was done?
I don't, yeah, I think.
Um, that was great. It was a, our retainage, it was like a performance bond that had been held for so many years. They got their CFO and the building department signed off on it. They requested it be refunded to them.
So I have a question, the ninety thousand dollars refund on water and sewage, is that unusual?
It is unusual. Uh, we checked it several times over. Um, they replaced their meter. They had, um, prior leaks that were pretty expensive. They had them fixed.
Got it.
And then we were, because we couldn't get a reading, they were estimated until we verified that the plumber did the work, meter was replaced. And it, and they were, it was legitimately due.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Yeah, we went through, we went through that in detail. Yeah.
I'm sorry. So with the, the one that thought, the question I had was, we have two separate payments to the Scopelletti.
Yes.
What's that about?
No, that, just that they had, um, they had two requisitions that they submitted. We paid them in two separate checks essentially, you know, one, when we were satisfied with the first. The second one, when we're satisfied with the second. And it happened over the course of a few weeks and we went out of meeting, so.
So what's our, what's the next one coming in? They have to lay the brick there, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, they're, they need to, they need to start laying out the pavers that are sitting out there. They're not entitled, with this second check that you saw there, um, they're not entitled to really much of anything except some, some of the second wall that they're building. You know, some money associated with that. It's not a huge amount of money. Um, but anything more, they've, they've got to start working, so. So we're up, basically up to date.
Yeah, and all the materials covered, yeah.
Yep. Well, they're here, so that's, that's half the battle.
Taking up space.
Well, yeah.
Along with everything else.
Are they obeying the two-hour limit?
Uh, next is a motion to schedule a public hearing, consider local law, meaning the village could permit beekeeping in one family districts for October first, two thousand eighteen, seven PM, Village Hall. Uh, we discussed this issue in both July and August, and it's a recommendation from the comprehensive plan, uh, that, again, we're, this is just for scheduling the public permit. I have the motion, if I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
People will come swarming in here to support.
I think, I gotta say, I think the, uh.
And somebody had a second.
The beekeeping is the punniest of all of our laws ever. It's just been, it's been the, the law that keeps on giving. Want to tweak it every once in a while just to keep it up. Um, we kind of stay sharp.
Don't be late.
Yeah, we don't want to lose this thing through the junk stream. Do the public hearing consider a local law, meaning the zoning code permit bed and breakfast as a special perm use on Broadway and on Main Street? Uh, that's also for October first, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM in Village Hall. Uh, we talked about that at the July work session. It's another recommendation from the comprehensive plan, and I have a motion to schedule the public hearing. It's discussed, if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up is correspondence.
The correspondence we've received today, or maybe I got, I received today because they misaddressed it, but, uh, probably.
Bed and breakfast?
About, that meeting?
Exactly, that would be the public hearing part of that.
Okay, good.
Um, yes, we're just, uh, obviously we're just, uh, scheduling the, the public hearing now. And also, Miss, we have a Friday deadline for this meeting. If it was a public hearing today, we might waive that, but, uh, this is from Leola, uh, Speck, is that who you said? Um, just Leola, I like the way I, I like her email, it's just Leola. Dear Irvington Village trustees, thank you for sharing the topics of your work session and for the opportunity to comment. I appreciate your open and cohesive style, so that a variety of inputs can be considered in your decision-making for the health and vitality of our community. I suggest into the question about two of the topics on your nine twelve meeting. Planters and holiday wreaths, the beautification committee has been providing cheerful plantings in our village for a long time. My thanks to, to them. Over time, sometimes things need to be updated, repaired, changed. Glad members are thinking this way and providing suggestions. Wonderful the beautification committee members are thinking about monetary savings in consideration for changing from natural green, greenery wreaths to plastic. It's a similar dilemma as artificial Christmas. Real the best Christmas tree choice for that environment might surprise you. Artificial trees polluting to produce and can make more than a thousand years to biodegrade. Except I don't think they last that long when you hang them. A natural tree provides clean air while growing indecomposes to the risk to earth. Uh, that is a, a attachment to the article. Uh, if reusable wreaths are the way to go, perhaps they can be wooden rather than plastic with lights that can be put up and taken down each year. I also like to suggest native annual plants instead of perennials for the window boxes and planters, perhaps a variety of plants that bloom throughout the season. Some plants nurture birds and other beneficial organisms. Uh, hanging baskets need to be watered off and discarded after a season. I don't think this would use upon. A necessary noise, question, what does reasonable person with normal sensibilities mean? How is this very close together in the village? I have a neighbor who becomes annoyed by simple porch chatting at regular conversation levels during non-quiet hours and scolded a young woman for hitting the clicker to lock her car in the evening. I would imagine that kind of noise sensitivity wouldn't fall under reasonable person with normal sensibilities definition, but I wanted to chat. Important to be considerate neighbors with normal life, things like porch conversations and locked in car doors isn't something that should be forbidden and risk upon. Idling loud motor vehicles needlessly is an occurrence that creates noise and air pollution. Can you make sure that is covered in noise ordinance enforced? There's actually a county law that covers that. On the topic of enforcement, there can be violations regardless of the use of gas-powered leak blowers. Please do not enforce the ordinance even when violations are reported. Please consider adding another mechanism for GLB violation enforcement issuance of fines. Hastings has a sample procedure where you could use, reference residents' reported violation to a clerk who provides a letter to the homeowner. The unlawful GLB use doesn't stop after several warnings and fines issued. If you happen to need a sample where you'd like, also encourages surrounding villagers to synchronize noise ordinances. This would cut down on landscape, road construction contractor and service provider confusion by what is permitted where. Consistency would help any service providers only the rules better. Thank you for considering this, Leola Speck, your nice treat.
I like the idea of having a letter you could send out a couple of times just to remind people with the actual rules, or give them kind of a soft warning to them. I think it's better than, cause, you know.
A hard warning?
Well, because the, uh, enforcement, we've been carrying a lot of, uh, issues about how proactive the enforcement's been. So maybe that's a way to sort of like, you know.
Ease it to it a little bit?
Ease residents into it, yeah. So they're not, they don't feel like pushed on the spot, but they got the information in front of them once again. It's kind of a nice, it's a little softer.
So if it's reported, they get a letter. Almost, almost you don't have to file up, follow up, some report that you sent, they send a letter here, we heard that they're, you might be using a gas leak blower, here's the rules.
Pay the rules, right. And then at, at some point, if you, you know, someone who's sending those out are gonna, in the clerk's office is gonna go, you know, we've been sending a bunch of them to this address. Maybe it's time to actually give them a hard warning.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I'd be curious to know what Hastings', you know, rules are, because it just allows any resident to report any neighbor to the clerk who has sent a letter. You have a neighbor who's a crank and keeps.
Right.
Reporting car keys somewhere for, for clicking their clicker and getting, you know, and then you get warnings from the clerk.
Yeah.
Not to click their clicker. I'd be curious.
Well, certainly think, somebody to think about. Maybe we could just get a copy of that letter and take a look at it and see if, something that we could build on.
Sure. Next, uh, this correspondence with Deb Hargraves.
Can we get, can we get Leola's comments about the beautification committee to them?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think a lot of that was already discussed at the work session.
It, it kind of was, because that was sent just prior to the work session, but it hadn't been on an agenda, so, and she was here as well, but I'll forward it.
Uh, was she here?
Leola was here.
Oh, she didn't.
She didn't speak, yeah.
No, she didn't speak, right, yeah. I'll forward her comments.
They might have, they kind of, you know, environmental friendly plastic or artificial wreaths. Um, next is from Deb Hargraves. Uh, for villages that values and provides itself on a small sense of community, and I'm particularly surprised to say that our neighbors and friends, Scott and Maya Sykes, are not before the same assurance and experience at every time. Scott and Maya have received yet another paper fly on their doorstep on Tuesday notifying them of yet another commercial activity in Newt's. They are informed the afternoon for a TV shoot tells the city that Universal Television will be filming in Newt's on nine twelve from seven AM through eight PM thirteen hours, and on nine thirteen from ten AM to eleven AM, eleven PM thirteen hours. Setup begins at six thirty. No one from the village in Newt's gave them any further notice, nor any assurances that the film crew would not impact them. But of course it did. The Sykes said that there was a big production, and many of us in the neighborhood can attest to the number of trucks and vans transporting people parked on Hudson Road West and Clifton. By six AM, Newt's had already been buzzing with activity. The afternoon, the Sykes had several trucks and cars from the production company parked in their yard, literally on the grass, and vans returning around in their driveway. Today may bring more trespassing and impacts over the course of thirteen hours of filming. So once again, the financial game in Newt's and the village seems to be considered more important than our neighbors' quiet and safe enjoying of their home. But particularly disrespectful in light of the recent New York Times article that quotes our village as a place where our board of trustees has been on the forefront in terms of us being a welcoming community and throwback to small-town America. That is not the case on Clifton Place. Only Airbnb, VRBO, wedding guests and film crews are welcome in that part of town. The Sykes want what I would expect too, a limit to the amount of commercial activity that can take place in a residential home in Irvington. They expect that film permits are issued by the village that have been done in advance with proper notice and opportunity for neighbors to be heard. They want the appropriate time limits on filming and parking restrictions out in, put in place. If a resident violates village permits and they are expected the BOT not to issue additional permits under force to code, I do not think they are asking too much from our village leadership. I ask that the BOT afford the Sykes the same sense of community that we have only a few blocks away. Why should the Sykes continue to have to pay for the commercial activities of their neighbor? Why does the village continue to support that commercial activity? Since we live to the promise of what it means to be a community, that building a fellowship with others is developed from sharing common attitudes, interests and goals. Thanks deserve the last, thank you, Deb Hargraves. The next one is from the Sykes themselves. We received the attached flyer from Universal Television and disappointed that a film permit was issued without giving us the opportunity to be heard. We've been negatively impacted by yet another commercial-for-profit venture at Toothslifting. Start time is six thirty AM, but we could clearly hear activity before then. Our daughters in our bedroom windows face the street, not great on a school morning. This was a shoot that started extremely early, wrapped up late, and also took place on a regular business day at a time when school is back in session and commuters are back to their normal schedule. This was highly disruptive to the normal flow of traffic and neighborhood activities in this very busy corner in the village. Normal daily traffic includes school buses shuttling up and down Hudson Road West and Arzley Avenue West, Mercy College shuttle vans, and train commuters who use the two streets of Clifton Place as the most convenient cut-through between them, Hudson House tra, traffic, and traffic generated by the clinics for children and adults at the Arzley Country Club courts. Construction of the walkway to Mercy College has already disrupted the traffic and parking patterns in this area, and adding a film shoot on top of the construction made no sense. Let's be clear, we're in strong support of all the normal village activity and construction. It is part of daily life and we love it, love it here. What we cannot support is the continued abuse of village codes in the blind eye that has turned toward all the profit-driven activities at Toothslifting. Vans for the shoot turned around in our driveway, cars from the shoot were parked in our property for the entire day and damaged our lawn, a thought of which is attached. Most cars which park on Clifton Place park, parked partially on the street and partially on the grass. Cars from the shoot were parked entirely on the grass, which deepened the ruts and churned up our lawn. Friends and neighbors emailed us about not being able to find parking to safely commute to work or drop off their kids at tennis clinics. Also affected and had to change our daughter's after-school plans, all to fill somebody else's bank account again. All these inconveniences have been consistently occurring for years. We have asked the Arzley Park Neighborhood Association to follow up on our behalf as we are complete losses to how to handle the continued use of Newt's as a commercial enterprise. We are continually negatively impacted and feel as we have no recourse or voice in the matter. Thank you, Maya and Scott Sykes.
Can we talk about this at all, or talk about it when?
Uh, we can. We'll open the conversation.
Next time?
Next time?
Oh, 'cause, I don't know.
Here we are, I mean.
When, when there's a public hearing and there are people here. Or there's no public, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm rambling. I'm thinking that there's a public hearing, but that's another thing that we weren't talking about tonight because there's a public hearing on it, and I'm, you're talking about something else, I'm sorry.
We need to schedule a time to talk about it. Either we do it in, triggered by this letter, or we do it at the next.
Uh, we can have a larger conversation on, on kind of film permits in general. I mean, my, my particular problem with this one is that, you know, we approve something and then film company does something else. And, you know, I think that's, that's the biggest problem for me. Like, when it says it's gonna be all contained on, on the property, it's not, you know, that's, and again, it's, where is, where is the, uh, responsibility lie? You know, we say the film company, we say the homeowner, like, if you have to approve the permit, you know, so for not making them hear the, the permit, that's, that's the problem I have.
And, you know, there's, of course, there's extenuating circumstances like the, their location, they thought they were gonna be, they said they were going to, uh, or the majority of their vehicles at staging area was at the, uh, Immaculate Conception Church parking lot in that.
Voting day.
There was voting that day, so a whole area that was blocked off evidently, so, sort of, okay, so, so that happened. But, you know, does that mean the overflow should automatically be allowed onto Arzley Park neighborhoods, you know, neighborhood streets? That's my concern. Especially because the streets already are, there's already so much complaint about the traffic and the lack of parking at the moment down there. So it just seems like a lot of bad timing came together at the same time.
Yep, I agree. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think there's necessarily an easy way to prevent that, other than, you know, there's got to be some way to enforce the permit and say, well, you didn't say that you're gonna be parking on, you know, anywhere but the property or off, off-site, you know, so it's.
Well, the permits don't have fines attached to them for not conforming to them.
Right, that's, I think that's part of the problem. Or is, is, like, you can shut it down if, you know, if you're not following the letter of the permit.
Yes, I think there's some preventative, I mean, I don't know how to address this one, but like, I know the Sykes have, uh, complained about the parking and the driveway use. I mean, if I was going to be a resident and be proactive, I'd get some orange cones and put them out across the front of the yard and the driveway to block out, block activity off, once I knew something was gonna happen. Conversely, though, you could make it a requirement of the next time a permit that occurs in that, at that location, that they have to cone off the Sykes' property.
I think that makes sense. Um, is, is, am I remembering correctly that there have been several permits where there was no problem?
Yes, that's correct.
So this one, now, these all have taken place, obviously, but this particular one, it was a confluence and part of it was because of voting.
Right.
And obviously, everybody should have been a bit more, more attuned to that. This shouldn't happen, obviously. So, but do we say, well, we'll never issue a permit, permit at that location again? If they, if the Sykes weren't, they, we didn't hear from them for the, the two or three before this one?
I, my, we talked about it a little briefly before the meeting when I met with the mayor and with deputy mayor. My suggestion is that you have a law that's on the books, and there are going to be filming permit applications under that law. Okay, that's not gonna change.
Right.
And there's probably a strong likelihood that there'll be a filming permit application for this location. I will make sure I gather the proper information with maybe emphasis in certain areas that were significant problems here. And you'll be presented with the application. And you'll vote on it. It's not a matter of, I think it's, I think it's problematic if you, um, ahead of time, say that you are not gonna issue for a particular location, or if you instruct me to not accept an application for, because I think, I think we expose ourselves big time.
I, I will say one thing, is that I think that one of the problems I have with the filming companies as well, is they're like, we want to film Tuesday and it's Sunday, and we need to have this approved. You know, to me, it's like, you know what, then I gotta start waiting the next meeting because we can't trust the film companies.
I didn't suggest that there was gonna be any hoops jump through.
Yeah, but I think that that's, that's, I think that's part of the problem, is we've always been, I mean, we've always wanted to accommodate, because we kind of look at it as, as, you know, easy money for the village, um, or I am, anyway. And, uh, you know, I think what we found is that it's not always, you know, if it's too good to be true, sometimes it is. We've had, you know, half a dozen issues out of probably fifty permits. And I think that this location is extremely sensitive. If this happened in another place, it probably wouldn't, it may not have been a big, as big a deal if someone parked and turned around someone's driveway. This is a super-sensitive location, um, so I'm gonna be super-sensitive to it. And, you know, if, if they can't tell me they're gonna be invisible, I'm probably not gonna approve something there for a while. Because to me, it's, it's, you know, it's, at the, at, at some point, like, if something keeps happening somewhere, you know, it's, it's a combination of many, many things. And a lot of bad things happen, but it seems to always, you know, every fifth or one here doesn't seem to go that well. Um, so, you know, to me, I have to be very cautious, and I just hope that there isn't like an assumption that, you know, these are kind of rubber stamps, so.
Well, I think cautious is an, it's obviously a word, but also to be very clear what they need to show us. So if they're saying they're parking at Immaculate Conception, maybe we need to say that they need to verify that parking there is okay. That it's not the same day that Immaculate Conception is redo, repaying their parking lot. You know, that they can't just assume because past practice it's worked out, maybe it will and that will be fine. But perhaps we need to be, um, more specific and demanding that they cover each and every point that would satisfy the needs.
Documentation.
Yeah.
I think the other thing that bothers me is, a little bit of what Brian was saying hints to the fact there's not enough advance notice to just ha, put some, a flyer on someone's doorstep to say we're gonna be filming tomorrow.
They were.
Yeah, I got that too, because suppose it's also somebody's, you know, the kid's, uh, communion or graduation party or something.
Yes, and, so, but, and they, you know, they, they talk about wanting, they being the residents, talk about wanting to have a voice in this. And the problem is, we have been approving things kind of de facto via email to get them unstuck because of the weird meeting schedule during the summer. And then coming in and retroactively doing the official vote on them. So that doesn't really give residents a chance to talk about their issues on, on any particular location. So the only way I could see around that would be, maybe we can't do it by, you know, email.
We have to have an emergency, which we have done in the past.
We have to have a, like, a short meeting, make sure people know so they can come in and, and have their voice heard about it, their concerns heard. Because it may be, we add something like the necessary thing to add cones to a specific locations into the permit itself, just write it right on the permit, this is the agreement.
So it sounds like there are a couple of adjustments to permits in general that we might consider. One might be the, the fines.
Yes, I like that.
To the company could be substantial. That would be one thing. Another would be more timely notification of the neighbors. The third thing might be, you know, maybe it's not appropriate in every neighborhood, but cones to mark off areas where absolutely no cars could pull onto that area.
Especially when we have repetitive incidents.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying. It's not necessarily every neighborhood that would need that. And then kind of rewriting the format of the, um, the film permit, like, these are the steps that the film company is told. You have to do this, this much a hint. You have to watch for this, you have to do this, and this is the fine. And then we, we review that new form, um, and then we decide, is it, is it a procedural thing, or is it something we need about?
But, you know, I, I also believe that we have some culpability, culpability in this particular incident because the form, even the form says, starting at eight, or whatever, eight AM. The form clearly said, the written part of it said they were asking for it to start at six thirty or whatever, so.
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
I thought there was one that actually said six thirty.
The letter said six thirty. The Sykes' letter said they came at six thirty.
I believe I went back to the form itself and it says, it said.
Okay.
Seven.
I'm sorry.
Well, clearly we.
The form from the, the letter written by the film company.
What about the letter they handed out to people?
The letter they handed out said six thirty, absolutely.
Yeah, oh, okay, so that's where, I didn't go back to the form.
No, you, you did, yeah. No, I, I went from what was given to us that the approval was based upon versus what was given to the neighbors when they were notified, it was different, you're right. And no, I, and we pointed that out when we were talking about it earlier.
Yeah, so I think that that's kind of like, that's something that.
No, that's.
Some feedback should be given to the, uh, to the, uh, company, the filming company, or the site finding company, whoever it is responsible for the permit. So, you know, you can't continue doing this because there will be repercussions.
And I think that's another, another thing about actually having public meetings, which you've seen in the past, is that, um, neighbors can actually approach the, the company as well and say, hey, you know what, if you're gonna turn around in my driveway.
Yeah, pay me?
Yeah, you gotta show me money as well, so.
Yeah, right. You can park in my lawn, but you gotta pay me a daily fee.
Exactly right.
Larry, what's the, what's the trigger event that requires a police officer to be hired at the expense?
Um, it's really, it's really a judgment.
Our determination?
It's our determination, yes. Yeah, we, it's our, we, we base it on the location, the size of the crew, the, um, you know, the extent to which they need, um, street parking or anything like that. I mean, they're, they're, well, anyway, that, that's, it's a judgment call on our part.
And that officer is working on, is there her own time? Is that overtime, or is it part of a regular shift?
No, no, it's overtime.
It's overtime.
Yeah, which we're reimbursed for, of course.
And, and their responsibility is to do what?
It, it depends.
Responsibility is that there's no theft or murder and all that, but.
Yeah, right.
But is it also their responsibility to make sure that, that neighbors' laws are in the park zone?
Yes.
Yes.
It is?
Yeah. Or, or in this case, you know, when there was some parking on Clifton Place, which, by the way, I don't know whether it was all film company parking, or whether some was Mercy College students, there's, you know, there's a question about that. But when there is parking in this instance, they made sure there was orderly parking. It's a narrow street.
But on the same side of the street.
Right, it is allowed on the street. It's not that it's, it's not allowed. So, things like that.
But you could, for instance, I mean, just as a side, you could, for instance, mark that area off as reserve, like, police reserve, which, things are done along the streets, and then pass out, you know, six parking permits to the film company and say, this is your six permits for these six spots. So you could manage it a little tighter than if we wanted to or needed to. I guess that's what I'm saying.
It, it, the problem is that these decisions, I mean, it's clear from, from what they approached us with to what actually happened out in the field, that these decisions were field decisions made between the film production company and the police officers on site. That's largely what, what happened. And I'm not making a judgment as to whether the police officers did the right thing or not. They, they handled things, they handled things in a way that they felt was appropriate. Did they have all of the source documentation to start going back and analyzing whether the permit specifically said no street parking, or whether it didn't? You know, it, there really wasn't that type of documentation available. They, if you, if you read one sentence of one paragraph in a letter that the film company sent regarding this job, it did say that they, they expected the property to accommodate all of their equipment and vehicles. Out in the field, decisions get made a little more quickly. So, again, that doesn't mean that it was a correct decision or a wrong decision, it's just how it went. It wasn't like, you know, they had to call up for approval at six thirty, seven o'clock, or whatever time the officer was there.
But I think, yeah, I completely understand. But if we're gonna resolve this, you know, I think that the suggestion that we have a meeting where, so that.
Yeah.
Neighbors can be assured that the conditions that would make them comfortable, I mean, I'm not comfortable saying never get, you know, we'll just never, and, you know, allow anybody to use this again for lots of reasons. But, you know, neighbors certainly should feel, and we may not know, some of the concerns about, you know, particular routes or turnarounds or whatever, but if we can, you know, have a discussion about this, that this might, this might help. Because I don't see any reason for us to, I, I believe we're correct in saying you could just go ahead and approve these, this one happens to be a particular bear. Most of the other ones have been pretty routine. So let's just make sure that it.
No, go ahead.
It just, you know, that, that the neighbors have a voice in this, but that we, and we have a procedure for dealing with it.
Right.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out that we'll be retroactively approving two other shoots that happened that were at least as large, if not larger than that shoot in terms of the number of people and vehicles. And one of them started at six AM in the morning, and we didn't get any complaints about anything.
Yeah, there.
There certainly is a hypersensitivity in the neighborhood for, for all the change going on. Because it's, you know, it's just not the potential commercialization of certain properties, but, you know, the feedback about the train stations and that kind of thing. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, concern about, uh, changes in the neighborhood.
You know, tolerance is gone. It's been all used up.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, other neighborhoods, it'd be like, oh, I had a photo shoot, I can't believe they parked in my driveway for a half hour. Here, it's like, they're doing. in my driveway for a half hour." Here, it's like, they're doing it again for the length of time.
Right, it's like there's noise from that place again.
Exactly right. Exactly right where you, the other neighbor has noise one night, you're like, "Man, I was up till 11:30 last time I'm moving on." But it's whenever Friday night, it's the same kind of thing.
But I, but I saw this famous actor. I was like, whoa.
The only concern I have, and I, again, I could think of, you know, maybe, maybe a half a dozen to a dozen of these, which we've done in the two years that I've been here. And I think all of them have been retroactive. There hasn't been one, maybe there's been one where it was happening after we were approving. And I think logistically, it's a problem for us to, to, to have a meeting every time that we want this to happen, if, if we want to encourage people to come and film here. I mean, if we don't, that's a different story. We could set a bar that makes it very difficult, and, you know, and some neighborhoods will be happy, and some neighborhoods may not be so happy.
And that's restricting certain neighborhoods and say we have to have a public hearing for a particular neighborhood.
Yeah, that business.
Well, I mean, the other response, the other response of just saying we don't support filming across the village, that seems rather drakkarine.
Right, so, I mean, I think my, the gist of where I'm coming down is, I think that, you know, Larry should have some leeway in approving permits, as we've, you know, discussed in the, you know, in the recent past, that we need to know about it, hear about it. Maybe we'll need a little more detail than we've had in the past. But I think for us to wait for a scheduled meeting to approve something, when, as I said, I can, you know, I can barely think of one or two that have been done ahead of time.
Maybe two.
Yeah, maybe. And one was free. I think we approved only one.
So incorrect. So it was my suggestion that we take that, that film form and, and add those details, and then we should look at that and review that at a coming up meeting, and see if that meets some of the issues. And then, as you said, there'll be another film request that we normally, normally, back a few years ago, we would see it at a meeting, and we would discuss it or not, and approve it or not. So, and often, well, the girl on the train folks, they came sort of a few times to the meetings.
Well, but they, they.
Yeah, they were here like, big time, I know.
Yeah.
We all got coffee notes.
Yeah, right, we got books.
You weren't supposed to tell anyone that.
I didn't get, I didn't get.
Now you have $25.
No, but they, listen, they, they came, they fit within our.
Yeah.
Permit process perfectly. In fact, more so. They were, they were to us months ahead of when they were filming, because of the size of the production.
And I could say their behavior on station room was impeccable.
Yeah, no, I thought they did.
They had people there, standing there in the freezing cold, waiting to help somebody who had a horse that are.
Yeah, and then we still had the portico, whatever they built.
This video, if, if they're gonna come back for additional permits, it's in their interest to make residents happy and to make us happy, so.
Coming sooner, so that we can deal with it.
So I have only one other comment, which is just a, and I don't want to be shot at for this one, but maybe we do need to have a little bit of sensitivity training for the officers that go off on site to really understand what some of the issues are. Maybe they have to think twice about some of the decisions about allocating parking. Normally, you would think they're gonna do something to keep, you know, keep the traffic flowing, keep things off the side of the road, use safe spaces. But maybe if they know that in particular, this particular neighbor, it has had a very, you know, hard time with the construction of the sidewalk and blah, 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 maybe the decision process then becomes a little bit different. But you can't just send them out blind without kind of giving them a little bit of.
Make sure traffic was flowing, all that, so they didn't realize that they cared that someone turned around and looked in place or whatever.
Just a little five-minute, like, debriefing by the desk before they're sent out.
No, I, I agree that the communication of, you know, what's allowed, what isn't at each site by that film form needs to be clearly communicated. And maybe we can re-say that to the police.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at some of the ad hoc safety decisions being, public safety decisions being made.
Anyway, next.
Next.
A public comment.
A public comment?
Karen?
Public comment?
Already? I was expecting a big crowd here with the agenda. I thought, wow, there's gonna be loads of people.
Mostly it was announcing that they, the, the public hearing, rather than a public hearing, but we always like to hear it from you, Karen.
Well, thank you. That's very gracious of you. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for his very eloquent and beautiful comments at the commemoration of 9/11, because I thought it was not only very moving, but your reminder about the first responders and the volunteers involved, I thought was so applicable now. And your final comment about, "Let's remember 9/11, but let's remember 9/12 also," because it was a day when we all were very much aware of one another and caring about one another.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But the reason I came actually was because I was wondering if there is any concern here about the Army Corps of Engineers' situation on the river. Has that been investigated, or?
It's uninitiated.
Yes, it is uninitiated. About that, um.
The New York, New Jersey Harbor and Triptary's coastal.
12.
Management.
He's a building supervisor.
12 on the adjustment.
Pardon, oh, was it? Oh, all right.
We're extending, we're, we're asking for the comment, comment period to be extended.
Oh, that's exactly what I was going to ask for, because it's just ridiculous. And just this past week, the League of Roomed Voters of the River Towns had a breakfast meeting on this with a speaker from Riverkeeper. And not only was the county executive there, but we had State Senator Shelley.
Mayor.
Shelley.
Mayor.
Thank you. Shelley Mayor. And Steve Otis from the New York State Assembly, and Catherine Parker from the, the Board of Legislators, and on and on and on. Lots of public officials. And there was really outrage, because if you have read these proposals, every single one of them is so dangerous. So I'm glad, I'm sorry to have taken up time for this.
No worries.
But I'm very glad that there's an awareness of this and, and action planned.
Well, we appreciate you coming to say that. Since you're the only one here, you can comment on whatever you like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I will ask one more time if there's a public comment, Karen.
Second.
I'm second.
Otherwise, is there any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With the filming.
If I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
These are all retroactive.
All retroactive, yes.
Right.
That's what I thought.
Next, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to consider a local law amending the Village Code to change one-hour parking on Main Street to two-hour parking. If I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. If I can summarize the law, it's gonna change the one-hour spots to two-hour spots.
Should you explain that a little further?
Then I'd change the six-hour spots.
But I'll change the six-hour spots.
We're not dealing with that.
This is the low-hanging fruit.
Really low-hanging fruit. Where it said one, and now it will say two.
Six-hour spots.
Right, and not on this one.
That's a whole different discussion, right?
So the question is, what is driving this?
I, I think in the, in the course of evaluating the parking.
Time's up.
Okay. In the course of evaluating the, the, the changes in regulations, this was identified as a, as a positive for the downtown, in that it would encourage longer visits to the downtown, to the retail establishments, the restaurants, during the daytime, anyway. At night, it didn't, doesn't affect it. But during the day. And it was also determined that this change could be made independent of any other changes. As, unlike many of the other things we've talked about, this one really isn't intertwined in, in any other decisions that we're working on. So we felt this was, as you said, low-hanging fruit, to move this one along. And then our, our further discussion is scheduled for October to, to try to flesh out some of the other changes.
And this will keep the 15-minute spot.
Anything that's marked other than one hour will remain other than one hour. But anything that's one will be two.
Maybe two.
So no, no change.
If you want people to shop and have lunch.
Right.
Get your hair done.
So the Chamber of Commerce is in favor?
And talk to your neighbors.
Yes.
To be honest with you, I don't think there was, there, I had any discussion directly with Nick, but.
Oh, I, I sent a message.
This discussion started long before.
Yeah, when it, when it went up on, on the village site, I forwarded him to, he responded, "Thank you." So he knows about it.
Any public comment? One-hour parking, two-hour parking?
Going once.
Good. We can make a 90-minute parking, Karen. Otherwise, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Resolved to adopt the local law amending the Village Code to change one-hour parking on Main Street to two-hour parking. I'll make the motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's have a betting pool to find out where the first complaint comes in.
Yeah, you know what you didn't think about?
Oh, no.
Next is a volunteer.
In the dark of night, and there was no windows, no.
Volunteer appointment at a theater commission? Resolved to appoint a volunteer committee member to the theater commission. Mayuki Furtado, member, service wire, uh, December of 2021. I'll make the motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's a great addition. He's an unbelievable musician, and he loves the arts. We're really happy to have him. I saw him last Thursday. He's thrilled to be part of it, so. It's a, it's a great addition. Appointment of part-time assistant building inspector. Did you want to give a tiny bit of color here, Larry?
Very, yeah, very little color, other than, we, we have an approved assistant building inspector position. It's a part-time position that's used to supplement the activities of the head building inspector. That position's been vacant for several months, so we've been looking for a candidate. We had to canvas county civil service list, and Ed is satisfied with the person being recommended.
There's no questions? I will make a resolution.
Is there a length of time for this? I don't remember reading what it.
Length of time for the appointment, or how many hours?
Well, there's a limit to the hours, right?
Yeah, it's, it's part-time, so it'll be.
Like 20 hours.
It'll be less than 20 hours. Seventeen and a half, maybe, is whatever civil service.
But it isn't a short-term assignment. I mean, it's ongoing.
It's your 12 to 15 hours weekly.
There you go. Yeah, thank you.
Your honor.
No, but it's not a limited duration assignment. No, it's, it's a, it's an ongoing position we've had.
Permanent part-time job.
But it's one, what's that?
Permanent part-time job.
Schedule a part-time.
Right. But, but keep in mind that we have the ability to be flexible with the number of positions we have, depending on workload in the department. If the economy is such where workload drops, then we can make adjustments. If it increases from here, we can make it further adjustments, but it's, gives us flexibility, so we're not. Anyway, that's enough said.
Resolved to make the following appointment in the Building Department. Peter Cook, part-time assistant building inspector, salary $40 an hour. Back-to-date, October 2nd, 2018, 12 to 15 hours a week. I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is appointment of fire department officer. This was to replace the chief who resigned. If there's any questions, I'll read the resolution. Resolved to appoint the following officer there in the fire department at the Tarragon, position of fire chief. I'll make the motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome back, Anthony.
Was he just chief?
Yes.
Yes.
He was outgoing chief. Back in. Almost seems like you, you'd never get very far as chief here. It's best to suck back in. Next is approval of license agreement with the MGA for a sidewalk along Hudson Road West. Larry's baby?
Yeah.
Next 80 pages.
Yes, exactly.
Larry, like.
Actually, it's 80 pages and only about 50 feet worth of sidewalk that this covers. It's incredible. So, yes, this is, this is a permanent license agreement for the use of Metro North property for, as I said, about a 50-foot stretch of land on Metro North property that we'll be using for the, for the pathway. This is the, probably the lowest, the last 50 feet or so at the bottom of the hill, where it connects into the current walkway to the platform. I'm sure you know, you have the memory, the location memorized, but that's where it is. And that's what this is. So that's, this was, as you know, all run through Mary Ann with her approval, worked very closely with Metro North's attorneys, and this is the fruits of their labor.
Until 2274.
2274, right. At that point, we'll have to reevaluate it.
Does this mean we have to, does this mean we have to leave it clean in 2274?
Yes, we'll put it right back to the way it was.
We have to put it back the way it was.
So what was your thing about it? I wasn't quite sure about it, that property would be sold.
Oh, if they, yes, that is a little unusual, so, so.
You did read it.
Yeah, that's, that's good. And I don't know if I can.
I feel like my last case.
I'm at a little, a little disadvantaged without Mary Ann here, and she'll, she'll be happy to hear me say that. So my understanding is that Metro North exists on land which is not owned by Metro North. It's actually owned by the New York Central Railroad or some other entity, Penn Central, whatever it is, is an entity that predates all of us, probably. The, so they, so they exist under a lease agreement. If, if the lease agreement either stops existing between them and New York Central, or if, or if the property is sold to Metro North, then the lease that we just signed turns into a, a quitclaim deed of some sort. We actually take possession of the property. It's a, it's a weird transaction, but it all involves this underlying fact that it's leased by Metro North and not, or MTA, and not, and not owned currently. That's the best I could describe it.
It looked like there was like three, or at least two levels in direction. There was an underlying investment company.
Right.
From way back. And then there was MTA, and then there was Metro North that has actual.
Right. Well, Metro North is like an operating company within MTA.
MTA, right, so it's like, wow.
It's very unusual, so.
How many it turns.
I know. But it basically, it ensure, the, the way I was, it was explained to me is that it ensures that we can continue to be on that property, I mean, as long as we're following all the requirements that we have to follow, but it ensures continuity of our.
At least until you retire.
Oh, God. I, I, I think this is covered for a while.
There's, there's no gaming nor adult businesses permanent on that property.
On the 50-foot stretch?
Yeah.
And by the way, they had to do an appraisal of that 50-foot stretch, and I had to pay for it. The village had to pay for it. It was about $3,000.
Wow.
But they insisted on appraisal. It was following every formality of everything for this little.
Yeah, it could have been 50 acres or 50.
Yeah. Which, by the way, you know, serves all of their customers. Just saying.
Right, right. And our community, and our community. And if anybody, if you haven't been down there recently, it's like, really amazing.
Yeah, they're, they're making good progress.
Massive feat of engineering.
Yeah.
So I have to say, the other thing about communities and engineering, I was surprised, I hadn't even paid attention to, how much along the, coming out of, from at least Yonkers, but farther south, all the way up, they're doing a heck of a lot of signal work. They're lifting all the signals way above flood stage, which I thought was kind of amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, they're up on stilts.
The amount of work they're doing is amazing. And I know they.
It doesn't help the tracks, but.
No, really, no, exactly. But they, they'll just dry off, right? But, um.
But signals will work.
They also did put in, they're putting in a bunch of drainage here, which I actually wanted to ask somebody about, because it's like really interesting, because there's like four pipes. It looks like they could almost have a pump, pump water out. I don't know if you've seen it, what they're doing down here as well. But I was fascinated. There was no one there that day. Of course, I had like 15 minutes before my train came.
Not in the crossover, tunnel?
No, and actually, like, right next to, on the tracks.
I think that's all part of the signalization work.
Yeah, I've been watching that as I've walked the park.
Yeah, I think so.
I've seen them.
Yeah.
So they're just gonna, they're just, they're gonna run conduit there or something?
They had a red, yeah, I imagine. And then they probably have the ability to pump it out, like.
Yeah. It was like a pretty cool little setup they had going on, but there's no, that day, there was no one there working on it.
This is the project where they explored using a portion of Matheson Park. Larry, you probably remember with the discussions with Joe.
As an access point, a staging area.
Yeah, and we negotiated and negotiated, and they eventually decided that our conditions were too much, because they would have made a mess, huge mess.
And they had agreed to, you know, some level of restoration, but it wasn't gonna happen.
They just put in a giant new, some kind of signaling thing that looks like a cell tower in Tarrytown, and people in Tarrytown are flipping out because it's enormous and it blocks their views, so. And the funniest thing is the comments were, they never would have found a way with this in Irvington. Always two or three people said that, and I was just like, I always liked the comments, but I didn't understand it, but I thought it was pretty funny, so it was like, there's nothing we can do, and they're like, now, trust me, it wouldn't have happened in Irvington.
Well, I had to say, we have some forward-thinking signaling work going on, but, you know, just the other day, I got a call from Mary Ann, who, wherever it was, we had some heavy rain issues.
In Greystone, I got stuck.
They got, the tracks were shut because of flood.
Yeah.
Like Thursday or Friday.
Thursday, because I was supposed to go to the Hill and Lawrence Open House, and I got here at seven instead of six, or six forty-five instead of six, and I got there and there was only people from Yonkers that hit the mountain, so.
And no regers.
Yeah, that's true, that's why I left.
All right, so let's do the vote.
Resolve to approve a license agreement with the Metropolitan Transit Station Authority to permit the construction of a sidewalk along Hudson Road West near the Arzon Hudson Train Station, and to authorize those administrator to execute said license. I'll make the motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a resolution to request an extended comment period for the New York, New Jersey Harbor and Tributaries Coastal Storm Risk Management feasibility study.
You'd probably get to the resolves on that.
Yeah, there's still a lot of resolves, though.
A lot of where as, where as.
Further?
Just suggesting.
Can we just do a quick summary of what it is? Yes.
Sure. Do you want to do it?
Well, I mean, I could do a little bit, someone can chime in. Basically, the Army Corps of Engineers have been looking at what to do to prevent flooding in New York Harbor and upstream up the Hudson, and they came in with some proposals, six different proposals, and anywhere from gates along the, basically, these mammoth gates that would close along the mouth of the Hudson, to all sorts of other kinds of somewhat engineering, I would say, excessive solutions. My bias is for something kind of simpler. And there were a couple plans that looked at basically just shoring up the shorelines and increasing, you know, some of the protective walls, but also doing certain types of flood absorbing and wave dampening kind of planting and that sort of thing, so a very much more ecological approach to it. So, anyways, there's these six items, there supposedly have been a number of Army Corps of Engineer meetings within, with residents of various municipalities up and down the river over the last three to six months, I don't know if it's even been six months, but last three, three or four months for sure, and everyone trying to get the public input so then they can go forward with a report and a recommendation. And I think there's been quite, there's been quite a bit of reaction from the environmental community, including Riverkeeper, about the potential damage that could happen to the Hudson. Once again, we're about...
Threat is very existence, as you have to say.
It would no longer be the river that flows south way.
Exactly.
So, I mean, you know, it's kind of on the order of like the blindness that allowed the whole notion of the oil barge angling spots right in front of all the communities that have been spending millions of dollars to get their waterfronts rejuvenated. Anyways, so, a lot of the communities were asked, everyone was asked basically to pass a resolution that is the one we're considering, that is asking the public comment period for this particular set of proposals, and thus the public education period to be extended so that a lot more residents can get informed and can allow their opinions to help shape the selection of the recommended purchase.
Good summary.
Yes. Didn't forget it.
And just the full range of impacts, that was like the last thing, and there's like a long, 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 long list. This is going way too fast to look at habitat for fish, commercial shipping, I'm just picking these nutrient concentrates, I'm just picking it random from this.
Well, look on the village website at this, today's agenda, and you can look at the attachment and get to that material, which is quite, actually, as you go ahead, it's quite extensive and it's quite informative to see the kinds of issues people are concerned about.
Agreed.
So, we're concerned.
Yep. Now therefore be it resolved. That week, the elected representatives of the Village of Irvington in Westchester County in the Hudson Valley did not comment effectively, as is our legal right, without detailed information and data on the social, economic, and environmental impacts of such alternative. The PowerPoint slides and the fact sheet provided to the public to date are clearly inadequate. The Army Corps needs to publish comprehensive information about all the alternatives being considered, including the environmental impacts on the Hudson and the harbor, and to share with the public complete list of the existing studies that will result in the preliminary assessment of the projects. I think I can do these a little quicker. And, after that one, be it further resolved, the meetings recently posted were too few, announced too late, and were not advertised so the public could actually be aware. Be it further resolved, the short comment period for a proposal with consequences that took last centuries or millennia is unacceptable. Be it further resolved, only one of the alternatives is even acceptable so far. Alternative five, described as perimeter only, is the only acceptable alternative the U.S. Army Corps has designed to date. Only shoreline-based measures should be employed. Be it further resolved, in its cost-benefit analysis, the current array of alternatives, the U.S. ACE should include an elevation evaluation of the value of the ecosystem services and the cost of shoreline measures that are essential to protect against flooding from sea level rise, even for alternatives that include harbor-wide barriers.
Oh, can I just make a footnote? These barriers that were made for the proposed for the Hudson actually handled surges but did not handle sea level rise issues, so that's why it's kind of like deemed to be very short-sighted. Anyway, sorry.
No problem. Be it further resolved, the full range of impacts must be considered before the six alternatives are narrowed. Before any alternative is eliminated from consideration, the potential impacts of each alternative should be studied in relation to the following, and there's twenty-six different things that Janus kind of touched on, deals everything from fish to economic impacts, so.
Who is this going to?
It's going to, I think, the DUC. It's in that first where as.
Yeah, but I think this came to us through an avenue that explained where to send it, so, and I think there was a, there might have even been a website to post it, or to...
Can we get it along to some of our local villages, Greenberg and the local villages, and maybe to the county executive, just so they can see there's...
I think this, I think at least Star Cuts and River Towns has been communicating the same message to all the members of the Star Cuts and River Towns, so it's known out there.
Right, and others have done it already. In fact, I think we...
We're slow?
We didn't make this up ourselves.
I already had this one.
May I say something now?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, tomorrow, so we can hear better, I have to go. Sorry.
So, the Army Corps of Engineers can hear you.
It's for prosperity.
Yes.
There are all kinds of websites about the responses, but tomorrow afternoon, the Board of Legislators has invited Riverkeeper to come back at one o'clock in the county office building, so I would urge you, if you're available, to attend that because there will be a presentation, and the slides of all the different locations and so forth are very impressive. I think it's going to be taped or, well, maybe it's even live streamed, but if you can go, by all means, attend. There's nothing to going to the county office building, as you know, but on the other hand, it will be available also online afterwards, the presentation, so anybody who wants to get to know more than you ever wanted to know, that's the time.
Maybe we should let MJ know that we did this as well, so she's aware for tomorrow's meeting that...
Right. I assume that the county board is thinking of passing something similar to this, and that's why they're having this presentation.
Parker was there at the meeting this past week, and she was the one, she's the majority leader of legislature, scheduled this program tomorrow.
I mean, there's a list in the first where as, but maybe you should share that with who we're sending it to, so we know, so we can make sure it goes to...
Commissioner of the DUC, Bruce Wylden, district manager, who has come in, yes, all these people.
I'll take MJ's other way back to where I'm at.
They all know.
All right.
All right.
We already made the motion, didn't we?
We did, did we pass, did we?
I'll make the motion if I get a second.
Second.
All in favor? That's right.
But I hope when you just ran.
Yeah, for everything I said.
Right.
And all the stuff you left out.
Even the where's I misspoke.
But they're all here in the record.
Exactly, read yourself. Approval of an easement agreement with Hudson House Tennis Corporation regarding a sidewalk along Hudson Road West.
So, I'm sorry, I should have grouped those other two together. So, this is a permanent easement for an area of land that is on Hudson House's property. They do own property on the west side of Hudson Road West, and they probably find that surprising, but they do, and it's a very smallest of elbows of this particular pathway that crosses onto their property, and that's what this agreement is about. So, this is a permanent agreement, which basically says that we will maintain that section of sidewalk, and Hudson House is not responsible if it's not maintained, and we already have a temporary agreement to do the construction from Hudson House, but we don't have a permanent agreement with them. So, it's, again, another piece of the puzzle.
People wonder why these things take so long to move along. It's not for Dr. Drive.
I wonder if any of the film trucks parked in this old business property.
Wow, on the sidewalk.
Resolve to approve an easement agreement with Hudson House Tennis Corporation regarding a sidewalk along Hudson Road West, and to authorize the village administrator and village attorney to execute said agreement, and any additional documents necessary to complete said transaction. I'll make a motion if I can, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Award contract 2018-17 for general construction for Village of Irvington project.
So, the next six agenda items are, they all relate to an approach that we're trying to take so that we can complete some miscellaneous projects, all of which are above bidding limits in New York State, but are enormously inefficient to have to actually bid each of the projects. So, for example, on our plate for a bit of time has been the construction of a shower and auxiliary bathroom space in the boiler room of this building. That project is probably about a fifty thousand dollar project. We probably spend about twelve or fifteen thousand dollars hiring an architect to draw plans and specifications so that we can go out to bid and get multiple trades to do the project, because it's a, well, it wouldn't be subject to Wicks Law, but we have to get a contractor to do that. We spend that much money on an architect doing those plans. What we're doing is, we went out to bid for the individual trade labor that are listed here. Bids came back, we're satisfied with who bid on them. We will then look to engage the services of a project manager, someone like Ben Branch or who we've been in conversations with, or possibly, you know, other individuals who can run a project, who can bring the trades in when they're needed, make sure the materials are here when they're needed, basically to general contract the job, and we think that that's a much more efficient way of doing it rather than have really formal plans drawn up. The window, there's a window refurbishment project in the library, is also another fifty thousand dollar project, that, again, to have an architect specify exactly what has to be done at every single window opening, you know, in order to refurbish the windows is just an ordinary big job for that size of construction. So, that's what these, the following six contracts are, and...
So, Larry, for each of these contracts, and I have to admit, I didn't read this specifically to people, you know, it would seem to me that, you know, part of a general contractor's responsibility would be to get these individual contractors in when needed, so does this contractor, are these people agreeing that when we need them, they'll be available?
Yes, that's, and that's part of what the general contractor will have to work out with these various trades, but yes, they...
And once they know that they're captive and they have the job, they also need to be able to be available enough when we need them.
Right, which is not to say that we, that they all need to respond within, you know, a day's notice. We didn't even specify that. It'll be a reasonable amount of notice, that'll be, the job will be planned out ahead of time by the construction project manager, and each of the various trades will be lined up to be brought in when appropriate. Does that mean we can start every project next week? No, probably not, but it'll get scheduled out, you know, in an organized fashion.
Welcome to home renovation.
Yeah, I mean, we're general contracting it ourselves, is basically what we're doing. I mean, it's a simple...
There will be delays.
Well, yeah, but again, it's under our control. There are delays with general contractors that are not in your control, so we have a little more control here. By the way, for those that don't remember this, this is exactly how we renovated the interior of this building. We felt that, we did have an architect draw up plans, but not bid-level plans. They were just fairly rough in terms of how we wanted to renovate, you know, where we wanted carpet and floor restoration, and not the windows, but this is going back to, you know, 2004 or '05, when all the interior offices were redone. So, we did this exact same thing, and we hired at the time, you know, a construction manager to do it. It was a much larger-scale project, of course, but we did it.
So, you didn't always get more than one, I see under the plumbing contractor, for instance, there was only one bid sent in, so that happens sometimes.
Yeah, we, I mean, we advertised as widely as we could, we got, you know, a few bids in some areas, you know, some of the areas, there just was less interest and less local competition, local interest, but, you know, again, we looked at the prices, we looked at the contractors, we're actually quite pleased that we know everyone that is a low bidder here, you know what I mean?
So, Pacific Trans Global is someone we've heard before?
Yes, absolutely. We haven't done business with them, but our building inspector knows them very well, and they're based in Hastings, despite their name. I know, it's a little unusual.
So, what, again, I also didn't read all of this, I must admit, but what happens if, you know, we begin to work with one of these companies and they're doing a horrible job?
Right.
What happens?
We can terminate their contract at any time. They're being, they're being asked to sign the village's standard, we call it a consulting contract, but it can apply to something like this. It's a standard contract that we have, that we've drawn up, and it has provisions for termination and follow the steps and move on. You know, I would venture to guess that we shouldn't have to come to that, I mean, we know, certainly the electrician and the plumber, we know quite well, you know, the other contractor, building inspector knows, but I suspect we'll be okay, but we'll see. But we have that ability, it's an authority.
And these are below, you don't have to, you know, have women-owned businesses and this, that and...
No, those are state, those are state requirements, yeah. The only thing that they, well, among other things, being certified and, you know, professionally certified and licensed, the contractors have to pay prevailing wage. It's a public contract, they have to pay prevailing wage to their employees, and that's it.
Okay.
Resolved three bids received for contract 2018-17 for general construction for Village of Irvington project, as well as Pacific Trans Global Construction Corp., estimated total cost per hour three hundred and fifteen dollars. Moegon Park Contractors, estimated total cost per hour four hundred and six, and now Kossick Corporation, estimated total cost per hour four hundred and sixty-eight. For the village administrator to term that proposal from Pacific Trans Global Construction Corporation is in order in response to the specifications, now therefore be it resolved toward contract 2018-17 for general construction of Pacific Trans Global Construction Corporation at the unit prices submitted in their bid, and to authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
You can probably run through the remaining five with just the resolves, if you want to go through that.
Okay.
It's up to you, but...
Resolve to award contract 2018-18 for painting and finishing to Pacific Trans Global Construction Corporation at the unit prices submitted in their bid, and to authorize village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve to award contract 2018-19 for flooring to Pacific Trans Global Construction Corporation at the unit prices submitted in their bid, and to authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you think that name is just a joke? I mean, I'd like to know how they came up with it.
Maybe they moved here.
Yeah, right.
They're Trans Global after all. It's a very strange name for a construction company.
Look, I'm with you, I didn't know them, but I know someone that knows them, so we're okay.
Resolve to award contract 2018-20 for ceramic tile to, you guessed it, Pacific Trans Global Construction Corporation at the unit prices submitted in their bid, and to authorize village administrator to execute said contract.
Motion, second?
Make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We wore you out, huh?
Yeah, Irvington Trans Global Corporation.
Keep talking, keep talking.
Resolve to award contract 2018-21 for plumbing to Greenfield Plumbing and Heating at the unit prices submitted in their bid, and to authorize village administrator to execute unit prices submitted in their bid and to authorize village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? I don't even drive, is that right? All in favor, we got a... Resolved toward contract 2018-22 for electrical work to Moravito Electric at the unit price submitted in their bid and to authorize village administrator to execute said contract. I will make the motion if I can, I have a second.
Second.
Well done. All in favor? There you go. Transliberated orchestra, you aren't second again. Next is authorization to approve change order number 10 for the Irvington Town Hall Theater. No, not the theater, just the exterior facade.
Exterior facade, yes. This is a highly controversial change order. Is it $200 credit in our favor? Yeah, so this is very, very simple. There was a, the contractor has not been here for a very long time, as you know, on the exterior facade here. The architect identified that there was a safety gate that was supposed to be installed up by the scenery door, the large scenery door in the closet there, and they didn't. It got missed, so the contract, the Allied World ordered the gate, had it sent to us. Jimmy DeCarr put it in, and they gave us a $200 credit for the labor to put it in.
Good. Well done.
Nice and easy, yes, exactly.
Very nice. You have Pacific Trans Global Construction. Resolved to approve change order number 10 in the amount of $200 for the door gate installation in the theater and to authorize village administrator to execute said change order. I'll make a motion if I can, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
So what happened to the contractors? Did they get dinged at some point, or?
No, I mean, it's just, it's money that they would have been paid for, but they're not getting paid.
Right.
Because they didn't do the work.
Materials and installation.
They provided the materials, so they gave us the credit for the installation.
It's like a million dollar contract and you get $200 back.
Yeah, exactly.
Make it up on volume.
Consider yourself lucky, yeah, right.
Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on, well, I should probably say what this is, this is awarded contract 2018-23 for 2019 Ford Explorer Precedent Intercept four door pursuit rated sedan, all wheel drive, for the Irvington Police Department. Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on September 12th, 2018, at 11:00 AM in Village Hall of Spallos, Schultz Ford Lincoln, $30,500. Bayer Ford, $31,037. Whereas village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the bids from the low bidders were, and responsive to the specifications, now therefore be resolved. The clerk treasurer has authorized to execute a purchase order for the purchase of 2019 Ford Explorer Precedent Intercept four door pursuit rated sedan, all wheel drive, in the amount of $30,500 from Schultz Ford Lincoln Inc. I'll make a motion if I can, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Just wait until they can get a Tesla Pursuit.
The day is coming, the day is coming.
Yeah, exactly. Zero sixty in zero seconds. Approval proposal from Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services to audit prior workers' compensation premiums.
Oh my God.
Is it Brendan?
Oh, Brendan can explain this.
It's actually, it's a win-win. There's no pay unless they find something. So as you recall, through the years, our workers' comp premium was going up due to our experience. A lot of factors go into the workers' comp premium. This is a company that will go back a number of years and review everything, and there's no charge to the village unless they uncover or refund. So I thought I'd take advantage of the work service.
Sounds like one of those TV shows.
Yep, excellent.
Yeah.
But wait, there's more.
Oh, yeah. But the thing is, this is a company that was giving us an alternate proposal on our insurance, so I think they want to kind of keep them.
Make nice.
Yeah, so it's a subsidiary of that firm that specializes in workers' comp and these audits, so.
They smell like cats.
There's nothing to lose, and it gives us peace of mind that they're all correct.
Yeah, perfect. I love the way you dig into these little things and find these little crevices. That's great. Good for you.
Resolved to approve the proposal from Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc., to undertake audit workers' compensation premium payments and to authorize village clerk treasurer to execute said proposals. I will make a motion if I can, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustees, days home, reports. Is she on the line?
Hi.
Second up.
Yeah. Tree commission is actually meeting, because of the Jewish holiday, they're meeting on Thursday in the library at 7:15. Anyone's invited to come if you want to see how the tree commission works, or if you want, they're looking for some folks to volunteer. You have to have a little bit of tree knowledge will be helpful. I mean, you don't have to be in harvest, but you have to be kind of...
Use some training too.
Yeah, so that would be good. Right now, I think we have the fun task of interpreting a resistograph test on a particular oak tree. That's one of the little side things that we're going to be doing next, this Thursday. And then the only other place I'll, committee I'll talk about is GPTF, Green Policy Task Force. They did have a meeting just the other night. They had what they called an emergency meeting because it turned out that MJ Wilson was in town from her extended deployment to Puerto Rico, so she was in town for a few days, and they had a meeting since she's been a very active member of that. And, you know, they're looking, again, for more volunteers, they're looking for folks that might want to be involved in helping specifically with the composting, the food-based composting project. And also, they're, coming on the radar is this, the Main Street Schools are interested in doing, starting their food composting, so that's going to become something that has to be talked through and figure out how that works, whether they have, you know, how that works with our existing contract, or whether they have to contract, or whatever the deal is, so, you know, to be D.
So we came up with a resolution and now we have to get that in.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
We don't have to change anything, but obviously...
School needs to take some steps, I think.
I think so, that's what I suggested was, it's really, you know, because ahead of time, I had made the comment, remember, I was commenting to you in particular, that the rumor was the schools were going to start, but they didn't seem to want to address that issue at the time.
Right, and then there was a fair amount of urgency being placed on getting this thing going, so we weren't going to sit and wait for the contingency report that the school decided, so they can, I'm sure there's a pretty cost-effective way of them getting all of this to work, but they've got to deal with suburban directly, essentially what I told them today, so...
So the other thing is that the, it's been quite successful. People are really bringing a lot of, you know, fruit scraps in, and they've been filling multiple bins. I'm not sure what they're up to right now, but they're, I know they're getting at least, I think it's two and a half, two to two and a half bins at this point filled, if they're four allocated, and that's it. Very, a lot of support from the community, it sounds like. I sometimes stand at the table talking with them and I hear a lot of people being very enthusiastic about it, so that's interesting.
Big news is a week from Saturday, Rocktoberfest. I'll let Brian talk a little more about that when I'm finished, but please, everyone, it's the big event of the year. The Community Advisory Board kicks off the 2018 school year in year five of the federal grant. The kickoff meeting is scheduled for tomorrow morning, the 18th, at 8:00 AM at the senior center. The Executive Board of the ISAB will be met on Tuesday, the 25th, at the senior citizen center. The Woods Committee meets on Thursday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM at the nature center. And the PBA has rescheduled their movie in the park for this Saturday, September 22nd in Memorial Park. Everyone's invited to join in the showing of Jumanji, Welcome to the Jungle. The movie is scheduled to start at 7:30. Parking at Dow's Lane is at that.
So the one thing I'll say is Stella Blues Band, which is a really great Dead cover band, is the headliner this year, and it should be a lot of fun. The Stories is playing, a bunch of other local bands are playing. I think there's four or six different types of beer and then at least 10 food trucks, I believe, so it should be a fun day, should be a fun day.
That's not this weekend.
No, it's the 29th.
Yes.
It's September 29th, which some people say it's not Rocktober, it's in September, but the real Oktoberfest starts in September, so good enough for the Germans, good enough for us, is what I say.
Well said.
Hopefully we have decent weather.
Well said, well said. So this, this Saturday, the theater has a fundraiser with bands and beer and a theme.
Exactly.
So if you are looking for a fun night, this Saturday night, I guess that's the same as the movie in the, that the, is being shown for kids, but that's a different group, so I really suggest you, you know, pick up these lists of what the theater is doing. This is a project that Mitch Bard, who's one of the commissioners of the theater, has been planning and finding interesting bands, and there's also a chance, if you want to come earlier and pay for VIP tickets, you can also have a reception beforehand. So that's, that's the theater. Their commissioners are meeting tonight, and we just appointed the new commissioner. They have several other new commissioners, which is great. I have another arts-related notice that some of you might, might see that this Saturday during the day, that there'll be some visitors in town, and if you pick up this flyer that's up in the lobby, you'll see that there are 80-some people coming from a group called the Arts and Crafts Movement Conference, that they're coming here to see the Tiffany Room, and they're also seeing the windows of the two churches.
That's on Saturday?
Yeah.
I hope they know about construction.
Oh, yeah, they know, they know. So Chris Mitchell will do a talk, and then some folks will be up at the Presbyterian Church, and they've been here to scout out the whole situation. Rosemary Katzick has been working closely with them, maybe you wanted to talk about that.
Right, just that, I know they've been in touch with you too, just their access.
Yes, oh, yeah.
That was their big concern.
They'll have access, it won't be private, they'll have access.
Chris will be in there doing his talk, which is so good.
Well, yeah, it may not be quiet with Con Edison working.
Well, that is what it is. They're coming...
What time are they in the building?
They're coming at 11, let me see, they're coming to Irvington from, they're leaving the Gould Memorial Library in the Bronx at 9:45, so they're going to be here at 10:15, and they're leaving Irvington at 11:30, so it's like, but this is a beautiful flyer, by the way.
It is.
But they got the year wrong on the Tiffany Room.
Are they coming by a bus?
I, yes, yes, they're not, they're not individual cars.
That's good.
But I didn't, no one asked me about, like, where does the bus pull in? Maybe that's something we better check on.
Yeah, I'm sure they can use the school parking lot. Yeah, that would be the best place.
Okay, so then there's Water Department and Highway Department. Guess what the Water Department has been doing?
Meeting meters.
You got it. They did a lot of summer maintenance, they've been assisting the contractor on Main Street with repairing the broken sewer pipe to Town Hall. They've been assisting the DPW with recycling, working on the Halsey Pond project, replaced the fire hydrant on North Broadway, assisted homeowner in locating a sewer leak on the property. They are very helpful, this Water Department. The Highway Department, I'm sure everybody has noticed the tree wells being installed, and so are, a lot of, everybody knows there's a lot of work going on. Removed two large trees blocking the roads, one on Harriman by Daisy Lane and one by Habemire. They rebuilt, repaired two catch basins on Upper Field Point Drive, and they installed the concrete curbs. There was a large sinkhole near the Ardsley Train Station. They repaired a large sinkhole and rebuilt the collapsed culvert at the Ardsley Train Station parking lot. They dug out and removed a huge tree stump by 96 Fargo Lane. They cleaned the catch basins with the back haul, and they assisted the Water Department with hauling of the fill for the Halsey Pond Dam project, and they've done line painting and filling of potholes. And I just have one other note, that this past Saturday, the Historical Society honored Andy Lyons. I think you all know Andy Lyons for the years, that he was president of the Historical Society and the Architecture Review Board, and I think maybe he worked with other, I don't know, the KAB maybe?
He was involved with the face, yeah.
Yes, face, right. Yes, I mean, talk about somebody who's done a lot in the village, so he was thrilled, and it was on a boat, it was on the world yacht that we, we got on the yacht in Yonkers and went under the, under the George Washington Bridge, and it was pretty cool.
He lives in Annapolis, all right, so he's got boats.
Yeah, oh, yes, he's working, repairing little models at Annapolis, at the...
Naval Academy?
Whatever, you know, the federal, the Naval Academy, right. So he's, he gets to do his dream of fixing little, little tiny boats, but anyway, we send our best regards again to Andy Lyons, and that is the end of my report.
Okay, the Fire Department, this is a report for August because of our meeting schedules have been a little, little confused, but anyway, training, August 7th, Bridge Street property walkthrough, August 21st, tabletop scenarios. Members walked through various building scenarios and discussed how to handle the situation. August 28th, addition, additional training with Hastings in Tarrytown, worked on drafting water from the Hudson River and large diameter hose operations. There was an incident on August 12th where the Irvington Fire Department was requested to respond mutually aid to Dobbs Ferry for a reported structure fire. Members responded with ladder 36 to assist, no other major incidents. Maintenance, Marine Four is out of service at Westerly Marina for maintenance. New engine 178 update. Second Assistant Chief Fillings and Ex-Chief Ruffler drove out to the Kami factory in Pennsylvania to conduct an onsite inspection for the progress of Engine 178. We identified a few items to address while the truck was in production, minor changes. We anticipate the truck's delivery by the end of October or early November at the latest, and they will let us know so that we can welcome the new fire truck when it arrives. Also, the Saturday, October 6th, is the Irvington Fire Department's annual inspection and dinner. At the firehouse will be at 6:30, and everybody is welcome to come to that and to join for the dinner by invitation. I have a report from the library. The library had a special summer reading program. This year, we had programmed 12 adults signed up for adult program, 13 teens and children, 89 children, five years of age and older, and they read for a total of 73,244 minutes. That's a lot of reading. There were 31 children under the age of four. They're not readers, but that did not stop them. They didn't log into the tracking program, but they did track their books on a special game board and activities such as visiting the police station or making art projects based on the books they've been read, that were read to them. In addition to reading, everyone had additional tasks to do for prizes. We know that our team participants read 14,197 pages. Total programs for adults over the summer, 22 programs, 335 participants, nine young adult programs with 32 participants. Note that 28 of those were young adults and three were adults. I don't know what the cutoff was for me.
Young.
A young adult, but there you go. And children, there were 51 programs with 1,748 participants, and that included 933 children and 755 adults. There were other programs which included art programs such as Learn to Paint Like Matisse, craft programs, Paint Rocks, a popular program where teen made, teens made their own all-natural facial products, and Jason from Green Meadows brought a variety of animals for a pop-up petting zoo. And in what was described as a lovely example of interdepartmental cooperation, Larry Schofer and several members of the Irvington Police Force acted as judges for a Cupcake Wars cupcake decorating contest.
In case you're wondering, we didn't eat any.
Oh, I can't believe that.
Just so you know, that's, that's the story and I'm sticking to it.
Anyway, this was just the main event from this summer. I would encourage everyone to check out the library's website, stop in, see what's going on. There's always different programs, different times, different age groups. It doesn't all involve sitting there poring over books. There's lots going on, so check it out.
Well said.
And I'm sorry, one last, one last thing, the Irvington Village Court, last but not least, from the end of June to 9/14, vehicle and traffic, 253 charges received, 307,06 disposed, that's by far the most total. Totals, 257 received, 330 disposed. Total money collected, fines, $44,330. Sure charges, $20,661. Civil fees, $1,997, for a total of $66,988 for that period.
Great. The administrator's report.
Just a reminder that you may have seen in your email today that the, the decision was made to suspend alternate side of the street parking on the side streets along Main Street.
Why?
I don't know that there was a lot of enforcement going on because of the chaos that's out there, but I think it makes sense. So the streets sweeping is suspended as well, which is really what that's supposed to work in tandem with. But we, we thought that would provide at least a little bit of relief for people. As an aside, I have no idea where anyone is parking right now. I don't know where all the cars went to. There's so many spaces out of service. And not that I have, I, I really haven't gotten a complaint. I'm sure I'll get them now, but anyway.
People are figuring it out.
Pretty interesting, actually. The, the mayor and I met earlier this afternoon with a group of residents from Hudson View Park to talk a little bit about the upcoming project and to try to help answer some questions about flooding that they've experienced in their backyards where Sunnyside Brook cuts through. Certainly an eye-opener, and I think the summary of the meeting is that they're appreciative of the work being done. Will it solve all of their problems? Probably not. The Brook is very narrow and very, very small channel behind their houses, and we're, we're not making a repair there. We're making a repair down, downstream. But it can't hurt what we're doing, and they appreciate the, the efforts that we're putting in. Good meeting. Then we had our engineer there as well, who actually knew what he was talking about. As opposed to the mayor and I were just standing there smiling.
Yeah, I was just a little far in the background, like this. He showed a smile.
Just nodding, laughing.
But we were smart enough to...
I care. I feel your pain and help.
We were smart enough to bring in someone who knew what we were talking about.
He even had a flood map.
He's got a flood map.
Your houses are all the problem there.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Great.
So Larry, I have one quick question. Are we tracking, or can the village track what's going on with the replacement telephone pole on, at Hastings Park? There's...
Yeah. Well, I can't give you a timeline, of course, because we never get a straight answer from, from Horizon.
There's been a pole on the sidewalk, and there's been wires hanging down about three feet from the ground, it seems like, for like weeks.
So, oh, it's been, it's been months, exactly, yeah. So the situation, it's a little bit of a tale, and I'll go through it very quickly with you, is that...
Is there a dog attached to it?
No, no. The, the pole that came down was as a result of a storm, I want to say in the spring sometime. I don't remember the exact date. It might have been May. I don't remember. The, the pole, as it turns out, was in the ground very, very close to a village water main.
Oh.
So in order to install the pole, there was, there was damage there that we fixed to this water main. The, the pole actually caused a bit of damage. We did a very quick repair. But in order to make the complete repair, it required a full shutdown of the system, which, because of its location, required all of that testing that incorrectly resulted in problems at Red Hat. And so that was the balancing of the system that had to take place, which I had explained previously.
Pressure relief valves not working.
With pressure reducing valves not working and a variety of other things. All of that's been solved. It's been diagnosed, but it took, as you know, it took a long time to fix. Until that shutdown could occur, the repair couldn't occur up on Harriman Road. Till the repair was done, the pole couldn't be put back. So the pole can now be put back and cleaned up and taken care of. Now it's on us and Verizon to get it, to stay on each other to get it done. So, so that's, that's a long-winded explanation, but it's, it's out of our court. It's now in, I think it's Verizon.
But they have been responding to, eventually, they started responding to double pole with, with removals, right? Those are almost all taken care of?
Uh, no, there's still more.
Too optimistic?
Yeah, no, they're not almost all taken care of, but they're, but we, we have what we think is a, a very accurate list, as accurate as we can ever have. And we stay on them. And they address a certain number each quarter, and they report back to me which ones they've addressed. And we update our list, and they keep, you know, we keep, we keep on them. It's the best we can do.
2274, or what?
What's that? Oh, yeah, that's right. We haven't done, yeah. And there'll still be ones that aren't done.
That's right.
So, anyway, that's, that's a whole other process. We just keep staying on them. It's the only way, you know, as we've talked about before, there's no legal requirement for them to address double poles. There's, there's a system that the utilities have so that they're working together to address the double poles, but there's no timelines and no fines in the law that, that force it to happen. So all we can do is stay on them and stay organized, so we know what the problems are. To the point where we just got a, we had correspondence with a resident on, is it South Cottanut? Or Dutch South Dutcher?
Dutcher, I think.
One of those roads, yeah. And, and they were complaining about a double pole, and sure enough, they went and looked at the number, and I had it on my list. So, where I said, we're on them. It's, you know, nothing more we can do.
We know you exist.
Yes, exactly.
So they only do a certain number per quarter?
That's what I've seen, yes. So, and they tell us ahead of time, these are scheduled for the upcoming quarter, and then they report back which ones are done. It's a...
Yeah, they did the one I mentioned.
Yeah. But, but then there's more behind it, you know what I mean? That's...
So I had, I had a quick question. Maybe Mark knows, or maybe you. When are they going to plant the trees in the tree wells?
At the worst possible moment.
Oh.
There, there, there's 17 new wells that are being installed. As of, as of right now, there's, there's, I think, 15 of the new ones built. There'll be 16 built very soon. The 17th is the most difficult one, which is the one right in front of Memos.
Yeah, right.
There's a gas line going right through the roots, and it's a, it's a mess. So that, that one's going to be a little, that'll be a little while.
Was there a resolution about whether they can keep it in the same place?
I think it's being shifted, but only, only a little bit. Yeah. I mean, we should, I think it's marked out. I haven't been down there to look, but...
I, I, the other day I was up there, I didn't see the shift word, yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm pretty sure we talked about shifting it. So the, but we, we did go out and get prices for our trees. We know which nursery we were buying them from, which is Prospero. And we will give them a couple of weeks of notice, or when they have to dig the cherry trees, and when they have to get the pear trees. And basically, our, our landscape architect said, you know, anytime from about September 20th until November 15th, you can do it. We're probably looking at some time in mid-October, more likely.
But the situation is to raise it's anytime until the ground freezes, really?
She did say, she said, and it could be till December 15th. It just depends. But we're, we're shooting for the middle of October, mid to late October.
Do we have a plan for warm?
The, Joe is, I mean, Greg is working that out with the landscape architect, and I think he's also asked questions of Alan Richardson, just to be sure of, of schedule. So we're, we're working on that. So we will. No, we will. We will.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Those great treasuries.
Am I off the stand? I'm just kidding.
We concluded our village audit last week. It went very smoothly. The village did, did well. We'll have a full report, the first meeting in November, from our auditor. I can give an interim report in between, but everything went very smoothly. We were well prepared for it. And, and that was, that was a large bulk of our testament on that. The other part has been working towards getting a new financial program. And we'll be entering the testing phase very shortly. We have progress reports and communication with our, the company every couple of days right now to make sure everything is going, going well and on schedule. And we're looking to come out with a new water program and billing format that will be for the end of October. So it'll be the November bill. So our schedule for that so far.
So people, when they get their bill and the mail, it'll look a little different.
It'll look a little different. We worked on the layout, and we'll be testing it with our data very shortly. So we'll have a graph requested going back three years, actually. So it'll be a quarterly bill. We're going back three years. There'll be a message board in the front. We can change periodically, like with alerts and things. The front of the bill gets formatted to the data. We can move it around, but it gets formatted that way. But that we can change anytime. So we have different methods of paying, and we'll be implementing a pay online. Either recurring, you could do that way. You could do it one time. You could use a credit card. But it'll be much more user-friendly. All your prior bills, you could go into a login portal, look at all your prior bills, prior usage. That's 24/7, you know, environment for our residents.
Aren't we modern?
Apple Pay?
Apple Pay?
No.
PayPal?
No. I don't believe so.
November?
You've got a pal to pay your border bill? That's great.
Actually, that, we have it in the back. Have it paid in person, online.
Gives you one level of security if you have payment interaction with it.
Right.
Assume, Mary, it's nothing.
Don't forget the, don't forget the monarchs.
Oh, amazing. Well, there were pollinators on Main Street. I can attest to that because they were right in front of the hall. Just before...
Before we destroyed their cars.
Before we obliterated them.
Because I, I tend to like have this little side hobby, so I know we're all milkweeds on Main Street. So just before the, the men started to work, I went out with a scissor and cut everything down, because I was going to use it for a project at home. Down in Maysman, it was full of baby, all the foliage was full of these very small eggs and baby monarchs. So we had it for about two weeks. The fire's office was a nursery for monarch cat lovers.
It was a little crazy town, isn't it? There's cat ladies and there's butterfly ladies, but...
And then we had, with the help of Anna, Anna Marie, who are in my office in Monica, we were all using actually the milkweed that we got from the front of village hall...
That you saved.
That we saved. And they ate it for two weeks, went to Chrysalis, and nearly all have had, or maybe one or two more to go. So I think it was in total about 13 monarchs.
And are they still in your office, or what happens if they have?
Are we ready to have a...
Through the Tiffany Room.
Oh, you should have told us. We could have all told you.
Maybe we should put a live camera on, on fire's channel, on the...
It was like when that, that giraffe.
The first one was Irving.
Irving!
Washington.
Oh, that's good. That's good.
So as an aside, actually, not that this is, this is where I'm extracting, I have a bunch of swamp milkweed that I've been growing. And MJ Wilson gave me the seeds a few years back, and it's a perennial, it comes, just like the...
Was that common milkweed?
The common, the, the Syrachus, yes, is the species name. So, is the common. So what I was going to say, though, is actually, I noticed today that all of my milkweed pods are almost ready to pop. So if anyone wants swamp milkweed seed, email me, and I'll get you some, because I've got like, maybe 15 pods ready to pop. And the thing about the swamp milkweed is it's got an incredibly beautiful and somewhat fragrant pink form. So much, it's, and it's a tall plant. It's kind of nice.
So what kind of soil is it like?
Um, no, it doesn't have to have swampy. It could, you know, it could be, it's kind of a back-of-the-border type of thing, because it gets about five to six feet high. It just needs a little bit of water, like any perennial, but it doesn't need a swamp.
Okay.
Unlike some people are trying to do.
Yeah, exactly. So again, I assume, I'm sure he still doesn't know anything. And Karen?
Last call for public comment.
Do you want to adopt a monarch?
Karen's officially the citizen of the week.
Yeah, okay.
Action letters?
Action, action, action.
Yes, I have, I believe the consensus was to, to take a look at the warning letters that Hastings uses for leaf blowers. So we'll take a look at that, at least to see what we're dealing with.
Maybe see what their process actually is.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it leaf blowers or just noise?
I think it was leaf blowers, in particular.
I don't know.
Look at all their processes there.
Ooh, okay. Something in your hair tonight.
I don't know.
And do the film, the film...
Sure, why not? No, I haven't even gone down the list here.
Oh, okay. That's the only...
I'll be forwarding Leola's comments to Ann Myers. I'll be revising the film permit form, as you suggested. And I have a note to myself about ordering two-hour signs. But besides that...
Two-hour signs, all right.
Besides that, that's a...
Recycle the one-hour signs.
Yeah.
Sell them, sell them.
Yeah, can't you just get a tune?
I will make the motion to adjourn if I get a second.
I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's ask Karen, if we...